President, Mayor.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Sulek?
Here.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Here.
Mayor Romero?
Here.
Before we go to item two, the city attorney will go over the rules of decorum for mayor and council meetings. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Arizona's open meeting laws provide that members of the public may attend and listen to the proceedings during tonight's public meeting at the mayor and council. Arizona law also allows the mayor and council to enforce rules and procedures for public attendance at the meeting to ensure orderly behavior and to prevent unnecessary interference with the public meeting. So here are the rules that apply. The rules require decorum and orderly conduct by the members of the audience. No person attending the meeting shall engage in conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting, including any statements or conduct, interrupt persons who might be addressing the mayor and council, or that disrupt the discussions of the mayor and council themselves. The mayor has the authority to ensure compliance with the rules of orderly conduct. If disorderly or disruptive conduct continues after a warning, and this is that first warning, the mayor may direct the removal of persons from the chambers or recess the meeting itself if necessary. If disruptive behavior makes it necessary to clear the chambers, the persons who disrupted the meeting will not be allowed to return to the chambers for the remainder of tonight's meeting. As a final note, please be aware that interfering with or preventing a lawful public meeting such as tonight's meeting from being carried out in an orderly manner not only violates these rules of participation but also violates Title 13 of the Arizona revised statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Item two. Invocation, pledge of allegiance, and appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. The invocation will be given by Reverend Ethan McCardle from Sunrise Chapel. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. God of life and light, help us to approach this meeting with minds and hearts, open to hearing and learning from one another. We thank you for the reminder to remain humble and to seek unity in all that we do. Let your spirit guide our discussions so that we might come to decisions that are not just based on our own understanding but seek a higher love and wisdom. Help us to remember that we were created for community. We need each other so that we might build that community together. May this meeting reflect your mercy, your peace, and your hope for a more aware, compassionate, and caring world. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, item two C. Presentations. Alrighty, we have two proclamations today. One is in honor of Women's History Month, and I'll go up to the front just to call everyone up that I'd like to join me for that one. And the second one will be for the Arizona Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta Holiday Coalition. And that one is in recognition of Cesar Estrada Chavez and Dolores Huerta Holiday. So we'll go with Women's Day first, and I'll be right down. And for any of my colleagues that want to join me up there, I'd be more than happy to be by your side. What I have today, and we organized, which I'm so happy about, is that we're recognizing women-owned businesses in Tucson. The women business leaders here today are a mix of legacy, family-owned, and newer businesses shaping Tucson's history, or should I say herstory, with contributions to our culture and economy. For the proclamation, I'd like to invite up here the women-owned businesses across the city of Tucson that my office has invited and reached out today. So Eddiez Movajedi, owner of Espresso Cafe, come join us. Tracy Conklin, owner of Artemisa, yeah, just right here. Christina Alcatrina Calderon, founder and CEO of Regal Fierce Media. Tiffany and Tara Dar, co-owners of Yellow Brick Road Salon. Catherine Kent, president and owner of The Solar Store. Vicky Conneke, owner of Grandma's Spinning Wheel. Jenna Masharzak, owner of Transit Cycles. Mary Marchetti, co-owner of Breathe Easy Automotive. Lupita Tineo, owner of Viola Botanica. I'd also like to welcome, let's see, other incredible small business owners and especially those that have graduated from the city of Tucson's small business programs. Carolina Medina, RHLLC. Selena Santa Cruz of Barkenberry. Patricia Martinez of Danny's Kettle Bakery and Sweets, I need that place. Janelle Ledesma, Tucson via Transport. Soledad Guerrero, Tacos y Antojitos Sol. Ida Herrera, Bállica Services. Yamillex Martinez, Wild West Carniceria. Judith Johnson of J&amp;J Events and Decor, Blanca Carrillo, Churros in Zunsa. Arei Valdez, Pet Groomin, Mi Mundo. And some of you, if you want to join me over here on this side too. Viridiana Acosta, Viridi Viridi Boom Boom. Debeli Valverde, Debeli Digital Solutions. Jessica Ramos of Agro Food Safety. Bianay Hernandez of JB Roofing. And Veronica Contreras, Amelia's Mexican Kitchen. Alrighty. Okay, and if anyone wants to hold the proclamation, here you go. There you go. Okay, and the vice mayor is here with me to make this moment even more special. Let's see. Alrighty, so on behalf of the city of Tucson and the office of the mayor, I would like to proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month. And I congratulate all of the women that add so much to our economy and so much to our community, and thank you so much for taking that leap and opening your business and providing jobs for our community and expressing your passion to all of us. So muchisimas gracias and happy Women's Month. So whereas during Women's History Month, we celebrate the courageous women who have helped build a fairer, more just society, and whereas women serve many roles in our families, workplaces, communities, and society, they inspire, uplift, and empower those around them, strengthening both families and communities. And whereas women's achievements include the well-known, visible, and extraordinary but also include lesser-known, sometimes invisible and everyday contributions. And whereas countless women have fought tirelessly and courageously for equality, justice, and opportunity here in Tucson, across the United States and around the world. And whereas our commitment to advancing rights and opportunities includes women of all races and ethnicities, transgender women, women of all ages and abilities, and whereas spotlighting women's history is an opportunity to celebrate women's roles on the front lines and who have blazed new trails throughout history. And whereas commemorative months are also calls to action and reminders to persist, we must keep working towards equity, freedom of expression, access to quality health care, equal pay, reproductive justice, and the opportunity to thrive for all women in a safe and vibrant world that values us. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month in this community. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona to be affixed this 18th day of March 2025. Congratulations and thank you. So can we take a picture? Is anyone wanting to say anything to add to this proclamation? Anyone? Over here? Okay. I wrote it down, so. So I'm gonna make the speech a little Spanglish, mostly Spanish. Hola todos, good afternoon, everyone. Primero que nada, quiero agradecer a la alcaldesa y a Small Business Center de Tucson por todo el apoyo que brinda a negocios como el mío. Mi familia y yo hemos trabajado duro a crecer nuestro negocio Wild West and Distribution Center, y ha sido un camino de mucho esfuerzo y pasión. Gracias a los recursos y el apoyo que ofrece la ciudad hemos podido expandernos, conectar con nuestra comunidad, y seguir ofreciendo productos de calidad. Programs like these have small businesses to keep thriving, creando oportunidades y generando empleos para más familias. Para mí es un honor ser una mujer empresaria en Tucson y ver tantas mujeres aquí hoy que también están haciendo historia. Juntas, we are building something bigger, stronger, y dejando una huella en nuestra comunidad. Gracias por estar esta oportunidad y let's keep supporting local small businesses. Together, take a picture, whoever wants to hold this.
Alright, we're gonna do a couple of pictures. Here. Page one, two. And then we can do another picture with the businesses supported by the city of Tucson. And then everybody else just stand aside for just one minute. So all of the small businesses.
And so our graduates?
Yeah, all of our graduates.
Wait, the small graduates?
The graduates of our small business program.
Oh, yes.
We'll do one picture over picture, and then we'll do other shots.
With the small businesses?
With the small businesses.
The graduates?
All of the graduates.
I'll put someone up for rapid.
Over here with the mayor. See? That's the Sierra Laro, the group of the la ciudad, they can put in here. Sorry, she's right there. They can put on. All the gravadas, gravades, gravades.
Tocando. Tocando. Can I put this pony here? No?
Okay.
Así.
Okay. Here, the photo here. All right. Here we go. Yeah, go ahead. One more? That's got to be good now.
Okay, I know.
And now one more.
Already, one last shout-out because Eddiez wants to do a little shout-out.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Romero, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm gonna try not to get emotional, give this shout-out to my mother, Anna. She's an immigrant woman, and she's an artist, and if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be here today, running Espresso and creating jobs and being recognized by you. So I just wanted to say thank you, Mom. You're my history, you're my inspiration, my greatest blessing, and happy early birthday. Thank you so much, I'd like to serve you.
Thank you. Okay, and I have a... Okay. One more picture? Because I have a part two to this thing.
Yes, yes, babe, we're gonna do this part, then we're gonna do the part two. And then Regina, there's one of the ones. These are the quick one-on-ones, please. We're gonna go through these really quick, so, okay, there you go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Here, quick.
Love, thank you. And then the group from Yellow Brick.
Thank you.
The great group, thank you.
I'm gonna stand over here.
Yeah, everybody. Just a little bit to the left, or to your right, yeah, a little bit, just a wee bit. There you go. And then if you could be in the back, thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Alrighty, and we have a part two to this Women's History Month presentation. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the many women in leadership across all of departments in the city of Tucson, and would ask that you all join us up here in the front, please. Sixty-eight women are leading our city as assistant city managers, directors, deputy directors, and administrators, totaling forty-three percent of all leadership roles held by women in the city of Tucson. Some of these women are here tonight to receive the Women's History Month proclamation. And if I may ask, Lane Mandl, Fatima Luna, Barbara Coffey, Christina Swallow, Larisse Walker, Ansheneka, Shelpa Hunter, Sharon McDonough, Jen Toothaker, Corinne Manning, Loris Walker, Brandy Champion, Allison Chapel, Manisha Buttra, Joanna Hernandez, Savannah Martinez, Sarah Megason, and Karina Martinez. Every day, these leaders oversee our city services and operations that are essential to our residents. Thank you, all dedicated women that serve our community with such honor and dignity. Thank you so much, and let's give a big round of applause. Thank you so much. And just, let's take a picture. If you want to squish in.
We can do this right here. Oh, yeah, that one. Here we go. Smile. Thank you.
Thank you. Last proclamation, but certainly not least, is joining us here today are members of the Arizona Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta Holiday Coalition. If you can please join us up front, Steve Valencia, Evadong, Ceci Valdez, Ana Karina Rodriguez, Sandy Ochoa, Majarva Ramirez, Martha Reyes, Angela Reyes, and Roland Baker. Join us. Alrighty, so on behalf of the city of Tucson and the office of the mayor, I'd like to proclaim March 31st, 2025 to be the Cesar Estrada Chavez and Dolores Huerta Holiday in the city of Tucson. So whereas Cesar Chavez was born March 31st, 1927, in Yuma, Arizona, on a small farm that his grandfather homesteaded in the 1880s. And whereas during the Great Depression, his family lost their home and livelihood, Chavez left school in the seventh grade to work alongside his family in the fields of California, where he experienced dismal working conditions, racism, abuse, and exploitation. And whereas in 1962, Cesar Chavez founded the National Farm Workers Association, later to become the United Farm Workers Union, where he and Dolores Huerta raised awareness about the hardships farmworkers faced while being denied basic human rights. And whereas Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta laid a historic march of farmworkers from Delano to Sacramento in 1965, and conducted several hunger strikes to reaffirm his lifelong commitment to nonviolent resistance. Cesar Chavez's heroic leadership also protected farmworkers and their children from exposure to harmful pesticides. And whereas in 1994, Cesar Chavez became the second Mexican-American to receive the Presidential Medal of Freedom. And in 2012, Dolores Huerta received the Presidential Medal of Freedom from President Barack Obama. And whereas each year on March 31st, we celebrate the birth and legacy of one of America's greatest champions for social justice, on March 28th, 2014, President Barack Obama declares Cesar Chavez Day a national holiday. And whereas in 2014, mayor and council unanimously voted to establish Cesar Chavez Day as an official city holiday. And in February of 2025, mayor and council unanimously voted to add Dolores Huerta's name to the city holiday. The effort was strongly led by many community organizers who support Chavez's and Huerta's selfless dedication for farmworker rights, economic justice, civil rights, environmental justice, and empowerment of our most vulnerable communities. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2025 to be Cesar Estrada Chavez and Dolores Huerta Holiday in this community, and call upon the residents of Tucson to pay tribute to the life and works of Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta through participation in community service projects. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this 18th day of March 2025. Congratulations. Wanna say something? Okay, just really quick, in February, we talked a lot about all the things that Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta has done over the years, and their incredible work, but how their incredible work continues to impact, you know, the people of the United States, their workers, the employees, and their health, the health of also all of us, because when he did that with the pesticides, it not only helped their employees but all of us, because that pesticide was coming into our homes, on our grapes, and on our lettuce, and all of that. And so all of that, you know, is tremendous work that they have done, tremendous work that Dolores Huerta continues to do at 84, and she's still doing a lot. But it means a lot to me this time, right now, to do this, for a few different reasons. First of all, because their work is still so impactful. Second of all, because when we started this march and rally decades ago, we were, you know, honored to have quite a few of our leaders that are here right now with us. The one that I really, you know, want to discuss is, of course, Congressman Raúl Grijalva. He has always been with us, always was at the marches, and always supporting us, along with our mayor, Regina, and the city council, you know, we've had a lot of support. And right now, it's important to have a reminder about this importance because of what's going on right now with employees. Our employees throughout the United States are being harmed. You know, union, non-union, all of our employees are being harmed, and we've got to start to remember what was done in the past for us by some of these iconic people, and continue to fight, and continue to fight, and bring back the rights that they got for us, the civil rights that they got for us, the workers' rights, the food rights, you know. Thank you, thank you. Let's continue to work together. Look at this incredible group of people. Let's continue to work together to do what we need to do for our neighbors, our communities, you know, and our country. Thank you. And she's gonna talk about the marching march.
Yay! Thank you, thank you, mayor and council. It's so important that we continue to talk about the life and legacy of Cesar Chavez and the farmworkers movement, and continue to celebrate that Dolores Huerta is still here, still leading us, and the people power, and we continue to march and rally together. And so this year, Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta march and rally, and Second Annual Car Show, we've included that part, which has been so fun. And so this theme, this year is resistir, resist, right? Come out, show your support and solidarity. As Eva mentioned, our workers, this is of our farmworkers, our domestic workers, our union workers, right, our essential workers, who continue to put themselves for us to make every day possible. And so we're marching at 9:00 AM from Pueblo High School to Rudy Garcia Park. We do have shuttles that will transport you from Rudy Garcia Park to Pueblo High School so you can have your car parked and ready for after the march. And we're gonna have the Danza Capoli, local organizations, live music. It's gonna be a lot of fun, speakers. So come on out, come join us. It's gonna be a lot of fun to continue this celebration and continue to join in community, right? It's so important that we come together during this time and stand together in solidarity. So thank you, mayor and council, again, for always recognizing Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta. We'll continue to seguir la lucha, especially in honor of Congressman Grijalva, y si se puede.
Yay! Thank you. Yeah, I'll pass them out to everyone else. Okay. And then I'll pass them out to... Oh, wait, I'll do this. Yay! Thank you, mayor, thank you. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. City manager's communication number 84 dated March 18th is received and to make part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointments in the report, please?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to appoint Alan D. Young to the Veterans Affairs Commission. I'd like to thank Alan for your willingness to serve the city of Tucson at the Veterans Affairs Commission. We really appreciate your participation. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries, are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none, we move to item three. Mayor and council report summary of current events. City manager's communication number 68 dated March 18th is received and to make part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? We see some, okay. Councilmember Fimbras, before you move on with your presentation, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to honor the legacy of Congressman Raúl Grijalva. My friend, my mentor, my political father, as he would call me. Representative Raúl Grijalva cared deeply for this community, for Southern Arizona, for Arizona and our country. He always was fighting to bring meaningful investments to his district and to our community. He worked to ensure that every community member had the same access to amenities and services as the rest of Tucson. Because of his advocacy, the west side will soon have its first splash pad. its first splash pad at Joaquín Murrieta Park, giving kids and families a place to cool off and play. Admission Manor, a new multi-generational therapeutic aquatic center, the first of its kind in Ward One. There will also be a therapeutic pool, a splash pad, and shade. His investments in El Pueblo Center have already resulted in a renovated space for our community's safety, health, and wellness, a hub, a high-tech, high-flex classrooms for our community, and Pima Community College. We are about to begin improvements to the outdoor space and preschool building because of Congressman Grijalva. For over 50 years, Congressman Grijalva served Tucson, Pima County, and Southern Arizona. And for over 15 years, Congressman Grijalva worked in coalition with tribal nations in Arizona communities to establish the Bajna Wajo Itakuvenki National Monument, protecting the ancestral footprints of the Grand Canyon for future generations. His leadership was one as powerful on the national stage as it was here in Arizona. During the Trump administration, he stood firm in his values, speaking out for what he knew was right, even when it meant challenging his own party. To his family, you have our deepest love and support. To our community, let's honor Congressman Grijalva's memory and service to Tucson, to Southern Arizona, to Arizona and the nation. It's all about the love, my friend. Rest in peace and rest in power. Because of you, people like I exist in these spaces. And from now on, those seeds that you planted in all of us will continue to bear fruit. Thank you all for giving me this time and space and for being able to honor the service of my friend and the congressman. And as he would joke around with me, ya cállate siguele. Thank you all so much. And I know that there are services that are being put together by the family. And I know that he really wanted in lieu of flowers, he really wanted to pay it forward. And the family has created a scholarship fund in his honor with the Sunnyside Foundation. We will be sharing that information with all of you soon. So, thank you so much for being the support. Go ahead, Councilmember Fimbras.
A true champion of our community, a strong voice for Robo. Everyone, I want to promote Adelita, Marisa, Maquil, and grandchildren. His legacy and cover will continue. And then
Okay, Councilmember, I think you're done, but are there any other, anyone else here? What I'm going to do is I'm just going to go from the end to Okay, we're going to go to the Vice Mayor and then go down the line. Council Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the words that you just shared with all of us. I'm sorry for your loss. I'm sorry for the loss for all of us. We all know that Congressman Raúl Grijalva was larger than life. And for me, he was very influential to be at the University of Arizona and through my involvement with Mecha and Mexican-American Studies, learn about his contributions from even in the 60s and 70s, when he was fighting for El Rio Golf Course to be a public open space for the community to enjoy a park. That's a lot of the reason why we have Joaquín Murrieta Park, why we have El Rios Neighborhood Center. My parents met at El Rios Neighborhood Center. I wouldn't be here had it not been for that community space. Just how he worked with us to leverage these funding opportunities. And like you mentioned about Joaquín Murrieta Park and Mission Manor Park, where a lot of our times, we were coming back to the community, saying like, what, do you want a splash pad or a pool? You can have both, when we know our community was in need of those types of investments. So I am saddened that he won't be able to see, you know, the fruit of everything he fought for for us. But I know, Mayor, that he, you know, was a a political mentor for you, made you feel like we belonged in these spaces. And I am grateful for you having stepped up. And I know a lot of your mentors were men, because that's who were in these spaces. But that is what you mean to a lot of us, as a woman, sitting in that chair, that you've created space for more of us to step into our power. So thank you for all your work. And you're not alone. And we're all here and we're all grieving along with you, especially to his wife and his daughters, who also, you know, carry on that work and really center people and are most vulnerable in this community. So thank you for sharing all that with us. Some of the events, we've already talked about the Cesar Chavez, Dolores Huerta Holiday annual march and rally. So again, that'll be this Saturday morning. We meet at Pueblo High School around 8:00. The program starts shortly after, and then we march to Rudy Garcia Park. And then, I guess the other, I have a couple of events, but just, you know, to be brief. This next Friday, March 28th, at 6:00 PM, we're having our monthly Fugas Outside Ride, Bicicletía del Sur. It's an evening bike ride on the last Friday of each month that starts at the El Pueblo Center. We meet at 6:00 PM and roll out at 6:30 at El Pueblo Center 101 West Irvington Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cunningham.
First, my same sentiments to all the people close to Congressman Grijalva as a public servant and as an advocate, his efforts were. I mean, there's not a lot of words. So I can say that I knew him from afar for a long time, but the first time that we had a significant interaction, it was life-changing. So it's, and he had that effect on everybody he talked to. So everybody has a story who met him. So Simona and Adelita and her siblings, I just want to extend my condolences. So I usually don't have a, I usually have a bunch of different stuff, but there's a couple of things that probably are worth mentioning this week. One of them is, is that this weekend, this Saturday at 9:00 o'clock, is the annual Silver Spike. And no one really goes to the Silver Spike as many people should. It's our annual open house of our Railroad Museum. And it's a great event. And every year, they do a great job highlighting kind of why Tucson got ahead early on was because we got the railroad up. And so it's a great event that Ken Carols puts on with all the guys from the Railroad Museum. It's at 414 North Tool, which is right down the street downtown, and you can check it out. Obviously, there's people talking about March Madness, and everybody knows that I talk about that. But actually, I'm going to pivot today and talk about Pima basketball. Because Pima basketball plays tomorrow, and they're 30-0. They have not lost a game. They're number one in the country. And win or lose tomorrow night, I think the community should be very proud of the efforts of Coach Peabody and Coach Morgan and that group. And one kid in particular, Cohen J. Gonzalez, all 5'8" of him, is one of the best young players in the country. I hope Tommy Lloyd takes notice of him. So that's what I wanted to deliver this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dahl.
I'll pass.
Councilman Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment from my family and my staff and myself to also send condolences to everyone who was close to Congressman Grijalva and his family. And like a lot of folks in our community, I didn't have the opportunity to know the congressman all that well, but felt his work deeply. And I know that his work will be felt for generations to come. So condolences to everyone for this massive loss in our community.
Councilmember Ulic. Okay. Alrighty, item four.
City Managers Report Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 69, dated March 18th, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one announcement for tonight. Just letting Tucson know that yesterday, Tucson Fire Chief Chuck Ryan notified me of his retirement, which will take effect on June 1st. Just wanted to take a moment to appreciate Chief Ryan's service to our organization and the people of Tucson. He was at the helm of Tucson Fire through the COVID-19 pandemic. In fact, he gave me one of my vaccinations. That's a little awkward. But he achieved the redesignation of our Class 1 ISO classification, which if you don't know what that means, that's really that Tucson Fire is one of the top-performing fire departments, and it actually has a benefit to businesses and homes in Tucson to have that type of a classification. And he forwarded the department as a national model in the areas of firefighter, cancer research, and mitigation efforts. And I just wish him very best in his retirement. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item four? I mean, item five?
Liquor License Applications.
City Manager's Communication Number 78, dated March 18th, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, on the evening's agenda, we have six applications for new licenses, one-person location transfer, and nine special event applications. All applications are in compliance with city requirements. So an appropriate motion would be to forward items 5B1 through 5B7 and 5C1 through 5C9 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carries. Item six.
Call to the audience.
Ms. Clerk, do you have any announcements for this item?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience will last 30 minutes. When you come up to speak, the timer or the green light will turn on when you begin speaking. It will turn yellow and beep when you have 30 minutes left of your allotted time. When your three minutes are up, the light will turn red and the timer will begin beeping. If that happens, please immediately conclude your remarks. Thank you.
Do we have any speakers? Alrighty, thank you. Dale Hanishiro? Dale Hanishiro? Can you move to the other mic, please?
Okay, hello? Hear me? Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Ms. Romero, members of the council, humble members of our community. Before I proceed, although I am a dedicated driver for Sun Van, as well as a proud member of the local 104 Teamsters Union, I am here on my own behalf as a Tucson resident and by no means being compensated in any form. And thank you. I'm truly honored to be here today. I'm surrounded by so much inspiration and unity. Honestly, I'm just like, wow. To shed light, I'm here actually to shed light on the program propelled Sun On Demand, put together back in 2020 by the former general manager of Suntran Student Spade. This program was originally put together to serve residents who resided just east of what's now known as the Tucson Marketplace. And the plan was implemented by Suntran due to the shuffling around of the closure of different types of routes running through the neighborhood. And going through the narrow streets, I could understand why. But they deeply affected a lot of residents there who desperately rely on public transportation, that do have meaningful ways to get to work. As of now, with the help of a small group, Sun Van drivers, reservationists, dispatchers, Sun On Demand makes its home at the current Sun Van terminal. Through the hard work and compassion and dedication from all who resides there, no matter how great or small the contribution, Sun On Demand survived almost six years later, going strong with the success. And the reason why I bring up this program now, it's implemented Zone 1, Zone 2, with the plans of Zone 3. The numbers have shot through. I've hoped I sparked enough interest for somebody of council to reach out to somebody at Sun Van, one of the reps, and so forth. And I'd like to take a moment touching on what was about earlier. I did not have the pleasure and honor to meet such a person, like Mr. Raúl Grijalva. But here's one thing that I learned. Through true peace, success, if you sit there and carry on one's legacy, because I carry on my mom's legacy. I lost her many years ago as a child in the same battle. You will succeed. Because what cannot stand, what can stand united will never be divided. Thank you.
Thank you. April Putney.
Hello, thank you. I'm April. I'm a Ward One resident of Tucson, and I'm representing the grassroots part of the No Prop 414 opposition. As we mentioned in our open letter to Mayor Romero, we're eager to collaborate on solutions in the fiscal year 2026 budget and more long-term solutions at an inclusive time. Tucson's voices have already provided guidance to mayor and council on existing outreach, like the 2024 Budget Survey, the last P-Chip survey, Years of Public Comment Informing Plan Tucson, and the survey on community safety conducted by Just Communities. So, community safety. This issue is at the heart of the conversations surrounding Prop 414, and the failure of the prop illustrates that Tucsonans have a wider vision of what supports safety in their communities than what was outlined in the proposed tax. Here's what public safety looks like to us. Access to affordable housing, public sanitation resources in parks like bathrooms, even showers, overdose prevention sites, alternative emergency response teams, fair free transit, and the list just goes on of what constituents have said that they want to see funded. Tucson voters recognize that strategies which emphasize punishment over care that do not solve our most pressing social issues but exacerbate our worst problems, that's not what they want. Voters have demanded more expansive solutions than traditional policing, as we saw 414 was rejected. So speaking of public and community safety, the Agenda Item 12 ordinances that are under discussion by mayor and council today should not be passed, or at the very least, should be forestalled until any unintended effects can be studied. These ordinances are not only cruel, but they are backwards, and they are very likely to backfire on the city in terms of exposure to 312 lawsuits. The median ordinance is unconstitutional because it violates the First Amendment, as the city attorney recommends to change the language to make the law more facially neutral. There is a paper trail including the documentation of this hearing process, which shows that the intended effect of that ordinance is in fact to prohibit protected speech solicitation. That prevents the law from being enforceable. The intent of the amendment to that ordinance is clear to all concerned. It is clear the law intends to restrict free speech and is being amended with the knowledge that this restriction of solicitation will be the primary effect of that amendment. Additionally, the rationale for the amendment is faulty. The ordinance reads that the purpose is to protect the public from traffic hazards. But we don't see the city creating ordinances that prohibit sidewalks or bike lanes from being directly next to or within traffic, where we also see high fatalities and where I myself was almost killed by a vehicle. Again, it is clear the intent of that law is to restrict the free speech of solicitation. That is the goal, not public safety. That ordinance should be repealed rather than amended, as it is not only unconstitutional but will likely have unintended consequences. likely have unintended consequences like forcing unhoused people to look for other forms of making ends meet. Thank you. Free Palestine.
Rachel Kael, or Cole. Either Cole or Kael, sorry. Kael?
Hello, Rachel Kael. I am a longtime resident of Tucson. I am a longtime employee of City of Tucson, Tucson Water, over seventeen years. And I am a member of the union, vice president of the union. And I have a couple of things to discuss regarding compensation for our employees. So I'm going to start with your guys' City of Tucson poverty and urban stress report that you guys did in two thousand nineteen dated two thousand twenty, page seven, if you all want to look this up eventually. It says, "In order to meet the basic need of a minimal adequate level without public assistance, you would need to be making twenty-two eighty-six an hour." This was six years ago. I can tell you, right now, there's probably less than ten people in Tucson Water customer service that even makes close to that. You guys have been failing on actually compensating your employees fairly. If we go by inflation from this, the twenty-two eighty-six, by the federal inflation standards, it would be twenty-eight ninety-two now. If we even got a one percent raise every single year, it would be twenty-four twenty-seven. We don't even get that. I've been here for seventeen years, and I can say I make eighty-two cents more than someone who's been here five years. You do not compensate well. You keep saying you do. It's been on the burner when you guys raised the minimum for any kind of classification, that within two years, you guys were going to deal with the compression and the market studies, and that was four years ago now. You guys keep talking. Unfortunately, our HR directors keep churning over, but that doesn't change the fact that there should be something worked on this for for compensating your employees. Really, I just, I just really want to make sure that it is known that you're, the only reason I'm still here is because I'm loyal. I love this city. I love this employer. I love Tucson Water. I love customer service. I love our constituents. I love our, I love this place. But I'm here because of loyalty. I've been here through your furloughs, your hiring freezes, no raises for ten years. I'm here through the benefits cuts. I've been through a lot of the bad, and I'm just hoping that at some point, you will actually acknowledge us. Thank you.
Nikki Larson?
Good afternoon. My name is Nikki Larson. I'm the single mother of two teenagers. I began working for the city of Tucson in two thousand nineteen. I currently serve as a telecommunicator two at the Public Safety Communications Department, where I work as a police dispatcher and a call taker. In my five and a half years with this department, I have experienced so many changes that it's honestly overwhelming. While not all of these changes have been negative, many of them have had a direct and harmful impact on employees, including myself. Today, I'm here to speak with you about an issue that has raised, has been raised repeatedly but remains unresolved: our pay. Dispatchers and call takers for the city of Tucson are not making a livable wage. MIT recently did a study that for people with children, a single adult with one children needs thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. A single adult with two children, they need forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents per hour. And these numbers were last updated in February of two thousand twenty-five, and these highlight a stark discrepancy between the compensation and what is necessary to maintain a basic standard of living to this community that we serve. Let me clarify the gravity of our roles. A nine-one-one call taker is the first point of contact for individuals in need of urgent assistance, whether it's for police, fire, or medical emergencies. The dispatcher is responsible for coordinating operations and ensuring that personnel and vehicles direct directed properly to carry out emergency services. In this case, the Tucson Police, the Tucson Fire Department, as well as numerous surrounding fire agencies. These are not simple definitions. We are not glorified receptionists, as some have suggested. We are the lifeline between the public and emergency responders. I can't count how many times I've had to remain calm and composed while on the phone with a mother's mother whose child has just been shot, guide an elderly husband through CPR to keep his wife alive, or stay on the line with a young man who is bleeding out, unable to remember where he lives, so we can get him help. I've had officers hit their emergency buttons, and all you hear is yelling, fighting, and chaos in the background. And through all this, we also must manage callers who are screaming, threatening, and downright abusive. The mental, emotional, and physical toll this job takes is real, and it's significant. We are expected to maintain composure in the highest, in the most harrowing of situations, no matter what is happening on the other end of the line or the radio. Yet despite the trauma we face daily and the immense responsibility we carry, our compensation remains inadequate. We are asked to perform the impossible every day, and yet our pay does not reflect that. The bottom line is this: the pay we receive is nowhere near sufficient to the work we do. The city needs to stop allowing people who have never been in our shoes to decide what we should be paid.
Larson, you need to come to a conclusion.
Yes, ma'am. We need fair compensation. And we're asking for recognition and for the pay that we deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Julie Lohmeyer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I am here this evening to talk about what's happening in and around my neighborhood and to hopefully get your help in finding a solution. We are being inundated with homeless drug addicts who are destroying our peace, safety, and property. Very recently, one of them pulled a gun on my husband. There is no safety. They are occupying our alleyways, smoking fentanyl, and completely trashing them. Our dogs bark night and day. There is no peace. The alleyways are not our property, yet we have been held responsible to keep them cleaned up in for like the last five years. I have lived in my home for twenty years and have never had a rodent issue until now. Myself and a couple of neighbors have been infested. Health hazard. They are using the alley as a public bathroom, human urine and feces right up against our fences. Biohazard. We have spent countless hours and money doing cleanup over and over for the past five years. Myself and another property owner's fencing, new fencing to the tune of thousands of dollars are now being graffitied with spray paint. I've made numerous calls to TPD and the TPD, and they they seem as frustrated as we are when and if they are even able to show up. One of them told me that they arrest these people, and they're right back out on the streets the same or the next day. Another one said that our prosecutors are not prosecuting these cases. Numerous reports to Ward Three office myself and my neighbors have made, and reports to three-one-one requesting help keeping the alley clean. Now allow me, please, to share a little bit about myself, so that you understand that I am not a heartless person trying to criminalize homelessness. I am disabled with rheumatoid arthritis. Stress exacerbates this pain. Before that, I was in social services and worked with many marginalized populations, including severely mentally ill and and drug addicts. I am a registered Democrat and a Tucson native. I love my hometown. I am a U of A graduate. I am an addict in recovery who has spent the last decade working with addicts in recovery, mostly young mothers. I have worked with hundreds of addicts for fun and for free. My experience both personally and professionally have helped me understand some things about addiction. One, it's a disease with no cure, only respit one day at a time. Two, the gateway is often trauma. Three, when we're in our disease, nothing else matters, but chasing the high will do anything to get that drug. Four, no amount of help offered matters until we hit a bottom. Many efforts to help actually harm, as this often keeps us from getting to that bottom before it's too late. It prolongs the agony of active addiction. Addiction is a disease that no human power can alleviate. Homelessness is not a crime. Buying, selling, and doing illegal drugs is a crime. Destruction of other people's property-
Oh, ma'am, you need to come to a conclusion.
Is a crime. Accountability matters.
Thank you. Gerald Montag? Gerald?
Hello, my name is Gerald Montag. I've lived in Tucson for three years now. I represent myself. I'm here to talk about the Agenda Item Twelve ordinances. I enlisted in the Marine Corps at eighteen. I spent half my twenties in Iraq and Afghanistan. I've seen and experienced suffering very few people can imagine. These days, I volunteer helping animals on the street. I often come across people living out there, and many have become friends. Two of these friends have died. One, an elderly lady that died on a stormy night, just a couple months after being released back to the streets after a month-long hospitalization due to a stroke. Another died after a hit-and-run in a crosswalk, because in Tucson, homeless lives are expendable. Why would people care about them when the city doesn't? What is new to me is the local government willing to pile onto the suffering. A city council whose solution to get the people off the street would be to take the street away. A lack of beds for the unhoused, police being sent to respond to volunteers giving out food, nothing being done to combat rising costs, laws being passed that give our most vulnerable neighbors fewer and fewer places to go, because nothing helps a person's job and housing aspirations like a fresh conviction. The federal government is not coming to the rescue. This starts as a local issue, and the local government needs to address it at its roots in the community. Instead, we have a city government completely out of touch. A recent example was a proposition to increase sales tax immediately following a national election that was in part decided on rising costs. These ordinances, once again, just show how out of touch this city is with their constituents. Three-twelve was not a referendum on unhoused people trying to exist. It was a referendum on the fact that so many of our neighbors are without housing. It was to put pressure on you to either address the problem or lose your revenue. As long as it is far easier to lose housing than it is to get housing, the unhoused population will continue to grow. That is what you need to be addressing. The more public land you push people off of, the more private land you will push them on to. As a vet who sees my brothers and sisters living on the streets outside the VA, but also as a human who sees my fellow humans suffering all over the town you preside over, I say this with as much contempt for these proposals as I can muster. You all should be ashamed of these proposed ordinances. Get it together and make Tucson a better place for everyone. Send these ordinances to the trash bin they belong in, then do the bare minimum of a functioning government by making Tucson a livable place for everyone. Thank you.
Ben Lucero?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me come up again. We've been coming steadily for months. We've been at impasse for at least four or five months. We've been waiting for you all to stand up and make some move. We've met with almost everybody, Ms. Mayor. I'm waiting for you to make an appointment. That'd be greatly appreciated. Want to talk about some of the collaborativeness that we've done as a union. During the pandemic, Mr. Ortega asked us to stop collecting on the wellness incentive, which is Article eighteen, Section sixteen. We agreed to that, just to make sure that people were being safe and not coming in sick. Since then, the pandemic's over. We asked for that to be reinstated. And what happened? You guys, the committee representing the city, says, oh, no, the city's not willing to do that. That's BS. We should be able to continue that. And is there anything in place to replace that? No. Just at the Budget Town Hall, I had a conversation with Mr. Reels, because one of my committee members was denied leave time, unpaid leave time. And was it checked to make sure that it was totally not feasible? No, it wasn't. Ms. Terry Tran and Mr. Reels did not do their due diligence to follow up on that. I called them up on that, and Mr. Reel says, we don't have a contract. Is that what you guys really interpret? We don't have a contract? Because there are stipulations that we can do also, in Article twenty-four, if we don't have a contract. I'm not threatening anything, but I am saying, are you going to continue to let people that don't have the right idea continue to talk to you, talk for you like that? That's not good. That's not collaborative. It's growing our relationship apart, and we were getting better. Now it's it's growing way apart. Let's let's come back to the table and let's work on this. I'll be looking forward to meeting with you.
Roland Baker?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Chair and all the council members. Before I even begin what I want to talk about, I also want to Congressman Gahalva was a wonderful, unbelievable man. I met him in two thousand two when he first ran for Congress, and I knew that I had to help make that happen along with so many, a whole lot of people for Gahalva. I still have that old T-shirt. I couldn't wear it. I was going to put it on the other day, and it doesn't fit anymore. But not to be funny, I just want to tell you, him not being here with us anymore, it's a it's a heavy feeling. Yet, the other day, I thought about all of the people, including you, Mayor, all of the young people who are now in positions, and they're all because of him. They really are. They're all because of him. We have hundreds of them. He made seeds that have blossomed and flourished, and they're going to continue to blossom and flourish as we continue. So that's what I wanted to say about that. Now, the reason why I'm up here, the reason why I'm up here, some of you may not know, I've been an activist since I was seventeen years old. I'm seventy-three now. The first time that I was arrested was in Buffalo, New York about the Vietnam War, with Father Kelly, a Jesuit priest, who got me down that road of of being an activist. In those many years, I've been arrested probably thirty-four times. I think two thousand twenty-two was the thirty-fourth. All for civil disobedience. I'm sorry. I better tell you that part. I apologize. I wanted you to know that as well. So in those many times that I have been at those many protests, of course, I've been in front of police. Some have been pretty ugly. Most, I've been able to handle. Today, there was a protest because of what's going on in Gaza, because of the terrible things that this this country is doing and are part of doing in Gaza. The Tucson Police Department found out about it. I have an email that the Tucson Police Department sent to the U of A. That's the reason I'm here today. Oh, shoot. Tucson Police Department just informed the Marshall Foundation that there will be a pro-Palestine protest today at five-thirty on Main Gate Square. This event was advertised today, so we don't have any information regarding the size or scope of the event. UAPD is also aware and is monitoring the event. TPD will have additional personnel and also a tethered drone to a monitored activity. TPD is recommending that you remove any items from outside your business, like chairs and signs that could be tempting to protesters. The reason I'm reading that to you, the many times I've been a protester out here, we are not the ones who are the the violent ones. It's not been us, especially even during the encampment.
Come to a conclusion, please, Roland.
What I want to say is Tucson Police needs to see us as there utilizing our First Amendment, not there as being there. The fact that he that they even said, get, take away your chairs. In all my years, I've never picked up a chair for a police. So I'd like for you to talk to the TPD and also to the university police, and let them know, we are not the violent ones. Thank you very much.
Abriza Ziger? Abriza Ziger? Vivek Barhaman? Vivek Barman?
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I am here to ask you to vote against the ordinances that criminalize homelessness in response to 312. Aren't you tired of-
Go ahead.
Aren't you tired of cruelty? I'm so tired of cruelty. Like, it's raining down from the federal government right now. Prop 312 was cruel enough. Like, why are we guilty on top of that? Okay, this is random. My bank is Tucson Federal Credit Union. Anybody else bank with a credit union? Yeah. The cool thing about TFCU is their ATMs dispense $5 bills. And I always get some and keep them in the car. And when I'm in an intersection or left turn lane, I hand them out to people asking for money, because I could do that. I've been without an income. Come now for six months, and I can't do what I could? I did. And I'm lucky enough to be able- It's just so cruel. And the last six months for me have been a reminder that almost every one of your constituents, and probably some of you too, are far closer to poverty than you are to a guaranteed parity for the rest of your lives. And to do everything we can to help each other as a community and stay strong together, because, Lord knows, the feds are coming for us, every one of us. So please, please, don't let these through. I'm begging you. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Michael Cagero?
Michael Cagero. I live in Ward 6 in Samhughes. I have a problem. It's been occurring recently. I've been, over the past couple of years. But a lot of dead trees, large, very two-story trees, lots of trees, palm trees, are being cut up. And, but they're not cut up, they're cut up in pieces, and they're left on the ground. I've noticed our neighbor has a bunch of these. He had a beautiful tree in front of his house, and it was just beautiful. But there's a trend in some people's heads to destroy dead trees. They don't see that one thing is they help the birds. Birds have a place to go. You know, but this council has instituted a series of programs allowing people to complain about their neighbors if they don't like something they see in their neighborhood. If you don't like something you see in somebody's neighborhood, you can call up the codes division and have them, they'll come out and chop something down, or mostly, a lot of trees. And who complains about these? Well, anybody can complain about anything that happens in another neighborhood, in another person's yard. If they don't like it, complain about it. And the codes division will send you an admonishment and then tell you you have so much time to get something. Now, I did some research on this, and I found out that a lot of the people who complain, and by the way, you're allowed anonymity. There is total anonymity. You don't have to tell who you are about complaining about somebody else's yard or something else. Okay? And I found out that a lot of real estate companies are the ones complaining about these trees. And that is called gentrification. And that's what the city council and the mayor are supporting. Gentrification and the demolishment of these trees. But it's getting really heavy, you know? And I could talk more about it. But you need to do something to stop this, because it's about the neighborhood. Character, character.
All righty, this is going to be our last speaker, Bennett Burke.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and audience. My name is Bennett Burke. I've been a clergy member for 30 years in Tucson and Casa Grande, ministering to marginalized people. Currently, I'm co-founder and Tucson project leader of a group called Matthew 2534, where a mutual aid group open to all volunteers regardless of faith, a mutual aid group that helps our unhoused neighbors. I don't reside in Tucson, but all of the people I serve currently do reside in Tucson. I'm here also to address criminalizing homelessness with the ordinances prohibiting people from being in medians and sleeping in washes and parks. Many of the people I feed sleep in washes for lack of a better place to sleep. I understand the city is trying to respond to the Proposition 312, but where will the people go? That's the ultimate question. If we kick people out of one place, where do they go? Well, having been doing this for a while, I'll tell you where they go. Like some of the previous speakers mentioned, they go to alleys. They go to neighborhoods. They go to places that are worse than the places that they currently are. Many of the places where they are harming no one, bothering no one. So I urge the city not to approve these ordinances. And I'd like to finish with a short story. And I swear I didn't make this up for the need to happen to me while I was feeding people on South Side. And he pulled out these $2 bills, these very $2 bills, and he offered them to me. I said, no, no, this is for free. And he said, I know. I know you come out here all the time and feed us. I want to donate. I said, are you sure you don't want to keep that money? He said, no, I want to help too. And he handed me these $2. If that man can do that, he can not only do better, we must do better for human beings in desperate need. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out to speak at call to the audience. We really appreciate your input and feedback. Item 7, Consent Agenda Items. Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda items.
Item A is Approval of Minutes. Item B, Elections. Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, with Pima County Elections Department to provide election-related services for the 2025 City of Tucson Special Primary and General Elections. Item C, City Vehicles. Annual Approval of Exemption of Certain City Vehicles from Bearing Identifying Markings. Item D is Adoption of the Development Impact Fee Programs Land Use Assumptions, LUA, and Infrastructure Improvement Plan, IIP. Item E is Write Off of Uncollectible Accounts Receivable. Item F is City of Tucson People, Communities, and Homes Investment Plan, PCHIP. Funding Recommendations. Home Investment Partnerships Acquisition, Rehabilitation, and New Construction of Affordable Rental Housing Gap Financing Loans. Item G is Amending Tucson Code Chapter 10A-134 to Eliminate the Eight-Year Membership Cap for the Environmental Services Advisory Committee, ESAC.
All righty, may I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, if I may-
Yes.
Before you go to that, it doesn't need to be acted on separately, but there are two clarifications that I need to read into the record for consent item 7D. The first one is there's a correction to one of the figures in the Traffic Signal System as part of the Infrastructure Investment Plan. There is a traffic signal system item, and Southerners and Home Builders, this is a correction that I would like to make to that figure. Under the Traffic Signal System, it's currently listed as having a $30 million value in the IPP. Saba was correct in that some of the items that these included were eligible to be in that line. New value would be 4.83 million. It's a correction to the number from 30 million to 4.83 million. And then the second item is in Figure 17, IPP, under Streets, Number of Projects. And I'm just adding one specific project to that list. There's a category that's kind of a catch-all. It says other projects that are applicable. The specific project I want to mention tonight before Mayor and Council adopt the IPP, if you do, is there's a project on Country Club Road just north of I-10, running from Michigan Street to Milburgh Street. It's a very short section, but it's a city-controlled section of a larger ad hoc project. And we would like to have that specific project included in your thinking as you act on this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. All righty, we have a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the matters on the consent agenda.
There's a motion. May I give a second? There's a motion in a second. I need for discussion. Hearing none, we need to go to roll call.
And Mayor, the motion would be with the amendments read into the record, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham? Mr. Feimtis?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of zoning major change preliminary development plan and conditions ordinance adoption, TP, MOD, 0624, 00008, Circle K, Valencia, C2. 18th, legally advertised for a public hearing to discuss the rezoning of an existing Circle K site at the southwest corner of Valencia Road and Nogales Highway. The preliminary development plan proposes the expansion of the area dispensing stations. Will staff be making a presentation before this public hearing?
No, Mayor.
All righty.
Good evening, members of council. On behalf of the applicant, Jordan Riden, Circle K Stores. Happy to go into as much detail as is necessary. Very, staff support and all the attachments contain a number of good information detailing the history of the site to include high-speed diesel on the backside of the site.
Are you agreeable to the conditions?
Mayor, members of council, yes, we are.
Okay. All righty, thank you so much. I don't think we're going to request for a presentation, but thank you. All righty, speakers are limited to five-minute presentations during the hearing. So may I have a motion to close the public hearing? So there's a motion-
Don't move, Mayor.
In a second. There's a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Motion passes. The public hearing is closed. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordnance 12147 by number and title only. Ordnance number 12147 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located at the south west corner of East Valencia Road and South Nogales Highway. It was earlier-
I move for the mayor and council to pass and adopt ordinance number 12147.
There's a motion in a second. Discussion, hearing none, we do need to go to roll call. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Feimtis?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Sulek?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Ordnance 12147 passes by a vote of 700.
Thank you. Item 9, Public Hearing Reason. City Communication Number 72, dated March 18th, is received into and made part of the record. This is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the Casita Village at La Mariposa. The proposed rezoning request is a part of a larger multifamily development property located north-northeast of La Mariposa, sides of Corte Vista La Mariposa. Will staff be making a-
No, Mayor.
This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentation. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, whether you live in the city of Tucson, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. Will you do?
Okay. Did you want to call them?
Well, I just got a, I got a quick thing.
Okay.
So I put them all in order with the request for everyone from BCNA. So those are all in order, the way you guys asked. There's a couple extra at the end from Sonora. There's a few other people that showed up to speak as well. We tried to put them all in order. There's about 17 cards, which means that's like an 85-minute public hearing, and we only have 60 minutes. I'd really like to give everybody the opportunity to speak. So if you've got something that's already been said or anything like that, please try to get everybody, we just really want to get everybody in, okay?
So if you hear someone else saying something that has been repeated over and over, please cut your presentation short and just make sure that you give everyone that wants to speak the opportunity to speak. Let's see. All righty.
Oh, wait, Your Honor, do we hear from the applicant?
We don't have a presentation ready for this, so, no.
Thank you. The applicant has a presentation.
Mr. Attorney?
Honorable Mayor, Madam Council, ordinarily, have the applicant come up, make overview of the proposed rezoning.
If the developer wants to give a five-minute presentation, just like the other speakers, he is more than, I'm more than happy to consider that. But I didn't have a presentation scheduled from the developer. So if the developer wants to present in their five minutes, I'd be more than happy to grant a five-minute presentation.
Usually, we ask the applicant to come up and speak first, and then-
No, I don't have that.
I know, but I mean-
In a presentation. If you'd like to request it-
Rezoning.
Would be more than happy to comply.
I'm just saying that usually, we ask them to come up and present, right? Isn't that how we usually do it? I'm kind of off.
I don't have, so.
Some are normal, some of those, sometimes we ask the applicant to come up, and ask them if they're agreeable to the conditions. And that's probably just about like two minutes. They're welcome to come up and have five minutes like everybody else.
All right, well, let's let the neighbor first go, and then we'll bring the applicant in.
Okay, absolutely. So our first speaker-
Hi, I'm Jim Trigo. I represent Tank of-
I represent Tankaverty Valley Association, about 900 members up in that area. Is that better? Okay. Jim Trigo, representing Tankaverty Valley Association, got about 900 members. It's the oldest and largest organization in that area. As it stands, there's a lot of discussion going on that people hear things that references to NIMBYs. And TVVA is not adherent to that notion of not intelligent construction and development, whether it be public, private, or commercial. Like point that out in the, at the outset. We expected somebody else to present ahead of me. In any event, TVVA seeks to work with developers, the Bear Canyon Association, the city of Tucson, Mr. Cunningham, and multiple HOAs in, and local property owners and developers. What do we do? We look to resolve issues and make intelligent development happen. We are an active participant in the opposition to this rezoning effort. Development in floodplains and Mesquite Bosques that are critical to absorbing and dissipating downstream flood impacts. Provide by important natural Mesquite Bosque habitat and cooling corridors through urban development prevents this. This parcel is a significant component of the Sabino-Tankaverty shallow groundwater area. In its current state, this property provides renewable groundwater and supports remaining remnants of critical riparian forestry. Most of the property is classified as important riparian and biological core management area under its conservation land system. Specifically, the coalition, the CLS, for, that the following city, the following city policy under its general plan. Looky there. That this general plan has not been adequately addressed by this rezoning review, including no consideration of it in the zoning examiner's reports or staff reports. LT21 says, "Consider the application of the conservation land system designation requirements in rezoning reviews." Apparently within the CLS and categorized areas are designated for their high water availability, vegetation density, and biological productivity. Under the CLS, development in IRA requires 9% open base is set aside. Vice President dated November 19th, 2024 includes just 32% of open space and not only 48% open space within the project boundary. Tucson is bringing increasingly severe weather and longer droughts. To mitigate impacts on Tankaverty Valley and create resilience, climate challenges, we need to preserve, reclaim, and steward our existing riparian forests. The Tankaverty watershed is of particular importance. And per a joint city council MP 2009 water report, Tankaverty Creek is a particularly important water course because even small rainfall amounts, less than a half an inch, recharge the aquifer, which indicates that preserving floodplain function is particularly important along Tankaverty Creek. We have unanimous opposition by the TVVA Board of Directors to this activity. I guess I better quit, huh?
I'm till conclusion.
Okay. We basically believe that this proposal is another example of developer geared strictly, or developments geared strictly to maximizing owner-developer profits while generally resisting or totally ignoring inputs from the area's citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you. Vaughn Latour? Vaughn Latour?
I am Vaughn Latour, used past president of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association and vice president of the Powderhorn Ranch, which, which borders this project. Ten items. Number one, it's a sham that this council ignores precedents set by your predecessors that have denied building permits on this site more than four times in the past 30 years due to noncompliance with the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan and flooding. These proposals were for only 21 homes. Why does our city bother with 148 neighborhood plans while you continue to ignore what is in them? Will the promises of this council be worth anything while annexing future neighboring border, neighborhoods? The landowner dumped 70 piles of dirt illegally in the FEMA floodplain. It's a sham that when that was made public at the 2021 zoning department meeting, hearing, the dirt was immediately removed and then only after the dump site was graded. After dump trucks and graders had gone back and forth over the site pulverizing the ground, only then was an archaeological study performed that ironically turned up no artifacts. It's a sham that after Paul Iarino's denial at that 2021 meeting, the developer presents a new flood study that doesn't mention Mr. Carroll's original one showing that the southeast corner of the site has floodwater increases in excess of feet, his words, and that the southwest corner increases over a quarter of a foot. Both are in excess of the one-tenth of a foot limit mandated by Tucson law and reason to deny. It's a sham developers' original traffic study collected during COVID when local schools were remote learning and snowbirds were not here. They found that the Casita's original 20, 1,235 day trips would not affect Houghton traffic. Last month, the zoning examiner said a new study probably should be done, probably because the 235 homes that have appeared south on Houghton have, Omar sent to FEMA, did not contain available county report. In our 2023 meeting, Elizabeth, she claimed that she didn't touch about Casita proposal. Our group found that both she she and her boss, Mr. Zunista, and sent off the proposal. Faced with incomplete data and the, when the interim zoning examiner was provided professional hydrologist report opposing the developers, the examiner claims ignorant of flood science and just accepts that's the proposal. Antiquated out from 2016 through 2023, local reports were left out altogether. The examiner should have called for a third-party, fully independent hydrologist to make a recommendation. Our councilman graciously told the group that he would take care of that and would fund it as well, stating he had $50,000 from the city to pay for it. A sham perpetrated by this city is that when flood modeling fails to accurately predict possible danger, personal recorded observations must be called for. This group has given that to the councilman and the zoning department repeatedly, but we've been ignored across the board. Even FEMA now publicly opposes fill and build floodplain projects. It's a sham that the current developers now claim they have a 20% reduction in floodwaters. When we asked Bill Carroll how big these ponds were, how much water they could hold, he said he had no idea. Knowing that the plan is to raise this site some five feet out of floodplain, simple math shows that the resulting displacement of only three feet of water on the 10.79 acres displaces 1.4 million gallons of water back into the Agua Caliente, increasing flow and velocity. And that because this is a sheet of moving water, that's being replaced until flooding stops.
Don? It is Don Waffen?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Don Lucian. I live at 2051 North Powderhorn Drive, Tucson. I am one of several speaking on behalf of the Bear Neighborhood Canyon, Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association in opposition of the La Mariposa development. Just recently, I was reading through city manager's report in the minutes from 2005 on a rezoning for this same property. The owner sought a rezoning for a much smaller development at that time, and I was struck by a number of things. Councilmember Carol West called attention to a small discrepancy in the mountains of paperwork. And it made me ask myself, if she could notice a minor discrepancy, why can't you all see the major omissions in this current rezoning request? How did you miss that flooding problems are not resolved despite that claim by the developer? That the developer failed to include the Bonanza Castle Wash sedimentation in their analysis despite what is known about the overflow impacts? People almost died. That the city and county do not maintain nor inspect retention basins as it is. That the planning center cherry picked words from our neighborhood plan to create the illusion that this development aligns with the goals and policies of that plan. That the developer has not had a continual dialogue with the neighbors. That there are no bus, retail, or employment services near this proposed development. That the zoning examiner who serves in a quasi-judicial capacity failed to swear in everyone who testified. And by the way, why aren't we doing that anymore? How could you overlook archaeological Pez Park? But what really struck me as I read through the stack of paperwork is what Tucson residents have lost since 2005. From the zoning examiner to development services staff to elected officials, I could see as I read, a real sense of responsibility to our community, to the environment, and to the rule of law. Their belief in protecting the environment, the rights and the value of each property owner's investment, the idea that our government has a fiduciary responsibility to every citizen, not just to a developer, all of that was abundantly clear in those papers. Sadly, this is no longer true. We no longer have that. The La Mariposa development process, like the corridor tools process, has been a sham. You cannot approve a development that is little more than sprawl on steroids while claiming the CCT will prevent sprawl. You can't have it both ways. You can't claim that luxury development creates affordable housing. You can't rep your, represent yourselves as the champion of the environment by planting trees while you systematically destroy Tucson's last natural Mesquite Bosque. You, yeah, yeah. You can't, you can't say that you commit to prioritizing conservation by honoring the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan, but disregard its setback requirements when it suits a developer. You may try to create the illusion that you are impartial. You use the word equity an impressive 131 times in the latest version of Plan Tucson, and yet the developer gets advantages that we, your constituents, do not. We expect you may try to create the illusion that we still have a democracy by allowing a few council members to vote in our favor. But if our most recent city election did not get your attention, hear us now. We want a government that treats us with honesty and respect and values our contribution to the community. We want a government that does, does more than pay lip service to preserving our ecosystems, our investments, and our lives. Show us you can be the equal of the government we had in 2005. Vote no on the La Mariposa development.
Jane? Lauren Rojas?
My name is Jane Lariva Rojas. My husband, Martine, and I live at 10024 Estill Poso Trail, where we own three lots in Powderhorn Ranch, making up over 11 acres, all which butt up against this proposed rezoning on the Agua Caliente Wash. I am a Powderhorn Ranch Homeowners Association Board of Directors member. We are not NIMBYs. My husband worked in construction for more than 20 years. We were born and raised, both of us, in southern Arizona. We've owned our property for over 30 years, and Martine built our home and is remodeling the home next door that we purchased for our daughter and our granddaughters, ages three and five. Thank you for this public hearing. We stand before you, Mayor and City Council, we who elect, who elected you to protect us, the public, from current and future probable risks and dangers. We hope that you hear us today as we explain all of the reasons not to approve this rezoning as the risks are real and significant. I am going to specifically discuss the flooding. And we have submitted so many pictures and all kinds of information. One of the questions you're going to get with somebody who's going to support this is, if not here, then where should we develop? Not in the middle of a wash. If this development is so vital to both the suburbs and the city, why not put it on the same, and that has already been scraped of all the beautiful trees in the Mesquite Bosque? Oh, that's right. That area too will be subject to the aforementioned flooding and lack of access. The flooding issues have not been resolved as evidenced by floods in 1983, 93, 95, 06, 21, 23, and 27. That's seven floods in 40 years. Proving that this is not a 500-year flood, not a 100-year flood. Development, Houghton Road is 10 to 20 feet above the washes and the proposed, proposed development. Should never breach it. Our personal, Martine and I, personal experience and firsthand observation spanning over 30 years of living on this property, that the developers biased and fraudulent modeling doesn't tell the truth, the true story of this very complex flood zone. During the building of our home, we were required to raise our building pad three and a half feet to keep our home out of flood danger. This has worked for 30 years. The flooding has covered our entire 11 acres except inside of our home. Our fear is that this development will raise the water an extra one to three feet or more, flooding our home and all of the neighbors around us who have much lower floor elevations. Our pictures submitted with all the information that you've seen before shows water in 1993 rushing all around our property, a mile wide and several feet deep, from just south of Fonca Verde to north of Speedway. And then the pictures in 2006 of my husband standing in three feet of water rushing, he was rushing out to save our horses from being taken away in the, in the, in the flood. All the other pictures too show that our whole inside-out backyard was flooded under feet of water. Transformers could be heard exploding. My daughter recalls the, being terrified that her father and our horses would be killed. When floods like this occur, the results are unbelievable, leaving things like rattlesnakes stuck hanging in trees. La Mariposa Resort was devastated and left abandoned for years. Our pictures show the before lack of bank protection and the after, where all their illegal dumping up to four feet dumping up to four feet or more. Yet this, despite this continual dumping, there still is more flooding. The city manager's letter written by Ms. Swallow to the city, to the mayor and council recommending the rezoning was inaccurate and full of misstatements. Um, I submitted all of our information on our website, casita village at, um, dot org, now with over thirty-four hundred signatures protesting this, and we submitted four hundred approach to. We have accepted this proposed rezoning. If they want to build, they can build an area that's already marked commercial.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Weigle. My wife Lisa and I live at fourteen eighty-one North Houghton Road, independent homeowner and unpaid. Uh, we share property lines with La Meriposa and the proposed Casitas. We purchased our property in nineteen ninety-six and built our home where we raised our five children. My major opposition to this rezoning are threefold, traffic, nonconformance, and the potential life-threatening flooding. I find the application offensive in that it is full of contradictions, half-truths, and falsehoods. I will point to a few. First, in traffic, despite the applicant's claim that the buildings are oriented towards an arterial roadway, the three points of ingress and egress are oriented towards Cortez Vista Meriposa, not Houghton Road. Cortez Vista Meriposa is not an arterial roadway. It is little more than a driveway. In fact, it was a driveway before they paved over it and to theirs as well. Second is nonconformance to Plan Tucson sites, Plan Tucson's requirement of three things that must be considered are to the surrounding scale and intensities. Number two, environmentally sensitive design. Number three, compatible development that protects established residential neighborhoods. But none of those requirements are met in any way by this proposed rezoning. The entire area is zoned SR, which provides much more open space and preserves wildlife and habitat. The applicant edits a quote from the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan to omit, quote, "The flood zone will be retained as SR zoning and subject to applicable zoning regulations." The development proposed is for rental units despite the Bear Canyon Neighborhood's plan requirement to emphasize single-family owner-occupied dwellings. Plan Tucson explains why this is important. Quote, "A resident's house is often his or her largest asset, and the quality of the neighborhood can impact that asset. Therefore, better are often equated with more occupied housing because owners have particular vested interests in the condition of their property." Without interest disposal, I think that is ground to stop it right there based on noncompliance, but we'll go on to the last point, which is flooding. In the early, this is our experience, in the early morning hours of July thirty-first, two thousand and six, my family was awakened to our fire alarm and security, fire and security alarm screaming and the intercom system's high-pitched squelch. I hurried to investigate the cause of the commotion and found that in the kitchen, electricity was arcing off of the range hood like little bolts of lightning crackling as it hit the cooktop below. Even though all of the light switches were off, the lights would continue cycling on and off and on and off on their own. I quickly ran outside and turned the power off. Lopping short of reaching the foundation of the house, my finances or my fences, I'm sorry, were knocked down by floating debris, including dozens of wooden telephone poles. Several thousand feet of irrigation line were scoured away and left tangled in the trees. We spent the next three days without power and water. Once the power was restored, I had learned that all the outlets, smoke detectors, security lights, and most appliances and electronics had to be replaced. I was told by T E P that the water had damaged an electrical cabinet on Meriposa's property causing the power surge. My house is built up five and a half feet above the ground. And I am a hundred feet away from the bank of the Caliente Wash. Which is my house because I am five feet lower than the bank over. Once that will crest the bank, it flows south through my property until it converges with the ten, continues west. This is not an analysis or a projection or a study. This is our reality, a reality we have lived through several times. It has caused me property damage in excess of ten thousand dollars. It's important to point out that most of the property damage and the threat to life came from electricity, not the water. I was born in Tucson, I've lived here my entire life, a third generation contract. I've been in this business for forty-five years. I certainly understand the need for housing in Tucson, and it is not solved by building more apartments and manipulating waterways. I strongly oppose this project as I do not believe that it meets the requirement of being in harmony with existing communities. It would contribute to existing traffic difficulties and create flooding issues for my neighbors and me that our properties were not designed for.
Thank you. Catherine Karsh. Catherine Karsh.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Karsh. My husband and I live at ninety-eight seventy-seven East Forest Grove Loop in an HOA immediately off Bonanza Avenue and about eleven hundred feet from the La Meriposa property. My purpose in speaking is to share my personal life-threatening experience with flooding on Bonanza Avenue. In short, I almost drowned. About eight PM on August second, two thousand twenty-one, my husband and I were riding in the backseat of a hired car on the way home from the Tucson airport. It was dark and raining. As we neared the turnoff from Tancaverdi Road onto Bonanza Avenue, we warned the driver that there could be flooding on Bonanza Avenue. We asked him to stop immediately if he saw standing water. The driver cautiously turned onto Bonanza while we tried to find the signs and flashing lights that were always present near Bonanza Wash during monsoon season. Unbeknownst to us, floodwaters had already washed away the signs and lights. Almost immediately, the driver told us he couldn't see through the windshield because we were now in a fierce driving rain. In seconds, our driver shouted that the car was floating and uncontrollable. The driver immediately notified his boss, who called nine one one. Our car began to go in circles. The current pushed our car backward into the narrow Bonanza Wash. Just past the entrance of the Wash, we crashed into a tree. The terrified driver opened his window, grabbed the upper branches, and climbed out onto the tree. We were still in the backseat. Without the driver's weight, the car suddenly broke free from the tree. The car continued backwards down the Wash at a high rate of speed toward the Agua Caliente Wash. Water was coming into the car. It was already up to the level of the backseats. We realized that the driver's open window was our only way out because all the child locks were on. We climbed into the front seat, and I was able to exit through the open window. I hung on to the driver's door while my husband held on to my arms and shoulders. The force of the current was so strong that I could not attempt to stand in the neck-high water. Suddenly, the back of the car ran up the trunk of a partially downed tree and stopped. I used tree branches to pull myself through the rapid water toward a narrow bank to get out of the car and follow. We used the bank, and in the distance, we saw the lights of the Tucson Swift Water rescue vehicles. The rescue team told us that our driver, who was still stranded in the tree, had told them that he was at the V stations that evening. The car was completely totaled and had to be removed by tow trucks with heavy things. It's a terrible experience. If our car had not run into that tree, if we had been less mobile, or if there had been children in the car. We were warned that Bonanza Avenue could flood, but we had never seen flooding like that on August second, two thousand twenty-one. Unfortunately, our experience was not a random isolated event. Exactly one week later, another long-term neighbor, a doctor on his way home from the hospital, was rescued from the Bonanza Wash during a rainstorm. In conclusion, I respectfully ask you to vote no on this proposal. And I also ask whether you can be absolutely certain that the Casitas at La Meriposa will not increase flooding in our area and contribute to experience and loss of human life. Thank you.
Tom Lockwood. Tom Lockwood.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is John Lockwood. I'm currently the VP, Vice President of the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association. After my looking at the map, I assume you all had a copy of this. The, the, the Agua Caliente and Tancaverdi Wash is a going in sky blue. The Bonanza Wash in dark blue, which is not regulated, hosting a brown border. These parcels of land were purchased from developers and owners by Pima County Regional Flood Control District under the east of North Houghton Road, twenty-one hour acres, south of North Woods Place and the Isabella Lee Reserve. This area is a very important recharging area for the aquifer. The land parcels marked yellow are the remaining parcels of land surrounding the proposed development are sown as single ranch. The red stars on the map denote the location of where the photos of recent fears that can occur during winter rain or during the summer monsoon. The flooding issues have not, and I repeat, have not been resolved and are getting worse. Okay, I now like to go into risk assessment. We'll skip the other.